I'd like to call the August 6th meeting of the Carver Select Board to order. The time is 6 o'clock. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 9 and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page of our website for a listing and application. Draw mine please standing for the pledge.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. All right, first item on the agenda, citizens' participation. Would anyone like to come up to the mic? Seeing no one come up to the mic. Let's see. Next item on the agenda, the presentation of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA check from Plymouth, from the Plymouth County Commissioner. And I see Plymouth County Commissioner Jared Valenzola is here. Would you like to come up, sir?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you to the membership in the public. My name is Jared Valenzola, County Commissioner and Chairman, and it is a pleasure again to be back in Carver to present $117,828.85 from the American Rescue Plan Act. Of course, this is going towards two projects that you folks have submitted for public safety radio infrastructure equipment and telecommunications upgrades. Certainly, once again, as we've talked about before, with these one-time funds coming in, it's good to try and use these monies to take advantage of those one-time costs. Certainly, addressing some of the needs for public safety is advisable. A lot of communities across the county have done that, and we're really pleased to see that Carver was able to do it. I do send the regrets, or bring the regrets of Commissioner Hanley and Commissioner Wright, who both had other commitments this evening, as did Treasurer O'Brien. Certainly, we're grateful for the partnership with Glenn and Elaine and everybody in Town Hall, the staff top to bottom, has continued to work well and collaboratively with the Treasurer's Office and with my office to make sure Carver continues to receive the funds that have been allocated to them that we've all worked hard to make sure you can get. I do also want to thank Representative Gifford and Senator Pacheco, who have both been very supportive of Plymouth County's endeavors in these county funds, in these federal funds, I'm sorry, administration. As we've talked about before, there was some consternation about Plymouth County, first with the CARES Act and then a little bit with ARPA, less with ARPA because I think we proved ourselves with CARES. And as I've told those who have watched these meetings and come to these meetings before, you know, we did CARES at less than 1%, which received national recognition for the most effective and efficient management of the CARES Act. We are still on track at 1% for ARPA funds. So as I've mentioned before, and I know Glenn and Elaine have been on the calls that we've had countywide as it relates to ARPA winding down, it is hard to believe that it'll be three years that this program has been going, but we have given a deadline date of September 30th of this year for those funds to be allocated and spent. Now, the project doesn't necessarily need to be completed, but we want that so we have an ability to pivot should there be a community that won't use their full allocation. Much like with the CARES Act, we committed to not returning a single dime to Washington, DC. We've made that commitment with ARPA. In order to be able to have that flexibility, we've asked communities to communicate with us what they plan on using it in and having their submissions in, so that when inevitably there are some communities, I know Carver won't be one of them, but when there are some communities that don't use their full allocation, we'll be able to pivot and reallocate those funds to communities like Carver and others that need them. And as I've been saying, I said last night in Rochester, and I've said over the last month, whether that's a dollar or a million dollars, we're going to make sure that every community in the county receives those funds and we're not sending them back to Washington, DC. So that's really it for me, Mr. Chairman. I think I got everything. If Treasurer O'Brien's watching at home, he'll critique me on, he'll critique me later, but I would be very grateful for the partnership with the town. I did want to extend thanks to Mark Townsend, who's been your advisory board rep for many years and actually stepped up this year to be the chair of our advisory board, which, for the folks at home aren't aware, that's our legislative branch. So much like you have town meeting and the governor has a legislature, we have our advisory board. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, as I like to do. The advisory board is not glamorous work by any means, but we, it's very important for us. And, you know, we're grateful, Mark, I'm sorry, Mr. Townsend was willing to step up for that. So, and again, the partnership to all five of you and the leadership in Town Hall.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Townsend.
(laughing)
The board have any comments?
I have one quick question for the Commissioner.
Sure.
Just for clarity's sake, when you mentioned the September 30th deadline, is that the deadline for us to submit items, for those items to be funded? Or what exactly is that deadline for?
Submitted with the expectation that the funds will be expended by December 31st.
So we don't have to fund anything by September 30th?
It would be ideal that it would be funded by then, but we still do have until December 31st. One of the instances that we start to run into is communities we've given grants to and then they've realized maybe something came back cheaper than they thought, or whatever that instant, you know, whatever that specific circumstance may be. So we've taken those funds and put it back in their allocation. Now, obviously, if that happens after September 30th, we're going to reallocate it to communities that have applications in, that are above and beyond their cap. So one of the things that we're requesting communities do is make submissions that are above and beyond your cap, so that the Commissioners, my colleagues and I, when we meet, can pivot and immediately disburse those funds. We are asking, although again, December 31st is the, let me back up, December 31st is the drop dead date that we need to commit those funds of this year. December 31st, 2026 is the date those funds need to be expended. The one caution that we're giving is, let's suppose for a moment, a community takes $100,000, not takes, they earned it, they put in for $100,000. They realize in the middle of 2025, you know what, we really didn't need that $100,000. That money's going back to Washington, DC. We, the county, cannot reallocate it at that point. So that's why we're really emphasizing shovel-ready projects, projects that you're ready to take those dollars and immediately apply to the project with no instance like that occurring. Because once the December 31st deadline passes, the counties lost the ability to reallocate those funds. So the answer to your question is no, but yes. It doesn't have to be spent by September 30th, but that is, that is the goal of the county, is to ensure that it will be spent at least by December 31st of this year with no hope of a return. You know, some of the stuff that I know you guys have submitted for, and I know some of the things that you're working on that we've all communicated about, certainly would satisfy that, you know, purchasing equipment. You know, a lot of communities are doing engineering work and they're doing other, other activities that candidly, I think we're going to start to reconsider approving because if that comes in less, we can't pivot those funds. But if it's purchasing equipment, things like that, certainly, I think those, you know, we're confident those will be expended. But that's the caution that we're giving to communities is, if we're in the middle of 2025 or even 2026, and a town says he has $200,000 back, the county can't do anything with that. It has to be returned. So we're really emphasizing, again, one-time purchases like what you've done here tonight. And again, I know you have other, other items in the pipeline, so. So that's the very long answer to your very short question. Simple question, thank you.
My follow-on, which might be similar to that, is that so after September 30th, you would not be reaching out to communities? If you realized you had funds available, you would not go back out to communities after? The only way we can take advantage is if by November, by September 30th, we over request funds?
I would say that that is accurate. That said, I think one of the advantages that I think we, we bring as, as county, is we're local. We wouldn't necessarily turn anything away. It would be ideal for us to have that because candidly, there are communities that have submitted over their caps already. So we're going to serve those on, you know, a scale of some of the conditions I just mentioned, you know, is there a risk that the monies may be returned? So to answer your question, no, even after September 30th, we necessarily wouldn't say no to anything that came in after that.
I see.
And we wouldn't say no to a town that didn't submit above. But bear in mind, year 1 of '27, there are a handful that have already submitted above. And candidly, in the, in the interest of expedience and making sure the funds get out, the communities that submit above are going to be the ones that we take the first look at.
And just one more thing, Mr. Chairman, through you to the town administrator, when I look at our ARPA summary that we'll be discussing later, I think we're one of those communities that have requested more Plymouth County funds. We've requested above our cap as well.
Yeah, perfect. Carver, as always, is in great shape.
Mr. Hoffman, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Well, again, always a pleasure to have you come here, especially give us a check.
Yes.
Appreciate the partnership between Plymouth County and town management here as well. It's been working, it's been a great joint venture.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll do a quick photo with the well-traveled check. Now, of course, because I don't have, I don't have aid, so I don't want to take the picture. Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know if I told you at the story the last time, the crease in the middle is a result of a wind at the Tassie Beach. Almost went swimming one night. And as the Treasurer said, you dented it. It was almost gone. Good to see you, Jared. Good luck. Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Next item we have on the agenda, I guess, to look at any additional project requests related to the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay, the, the first item being requested is money for the Middleborough meter pit. The, I think you have in your packets, the quote that came in, the quote.
Did you hear the second sheet of the, you know?
Okay. And that is from Ardent. And the total amount of the bid is $254,994. The town already spent $81,379 on engineering costs, and the town already allocated $225,000 towards this project. So if you take the total of that.
Sorry, not seeing on the sheet.
Is it a delta that we're looking at of what the remaining balance is?
Yep, it has like a little highlight, a yellow highlight at the bottom.
Oh, we don't have a yellow.
No, we don't have that. Maybe it's on the, maybe it's on here.
It should be in there.
I printed it from here. But, well, it was in the packet.
It is in the packet. Do you have that sheet?
Yeah. So it's a sheet from beta engineering? It's like an Excel spreadsheet?
That's in the packet, all the way down.
So, is it the second page of beta engineering?
It should be the very first page, down the bottom.
Got it.
So those are the quotes that came into Middleborough. So the lowest quote is the $254,994. If you add that in with the engineering costs that were already spent, the $81,379, you get a total of $336,373. If you subtract out what the town already approved for the meter pit project, that's $225,000. The balance of that is $111,373, and that is being requested for the balance of the meter pit project.
That's on the schedule.
And where would that come from? What bucket?
Plymouth County.
So that's going to be an additional Plymouth County request?
Yeah, so all the projects tonight are going to be a Plymouth County request.
So since we're already $83,000, over $83,000 in deficit in Plymouth County funds, if, what are we going to do if?
So that includes.
I think the 111's included in that.
That includes.
Oh, that, that's included in the $83,000?
Yep.
Okay.
So before the requested projects tonight, we actually have a positive balance of $108,643. The total of the projects being requested tonight is $192,524, which would put us over about 4%.
So are there, are there things that we've requested from Plymouth County that we anticipate them not approving that might leave, might get rid of that $83,000 deficit?
So all the requests before you tonight, we put in front of Plymouth County before bringing them before you, and they are confident that these all should go through.
So we are over the $83,880. You've heard the Commissioners say they actually want us to put in additional parts in case there's a reallocation of funds. So it does beg the question, right? What if they, what if there's no reallocation of funds, right? Now we have $83,000 that isn't being covered by the Plymouth County ARPA. So we anticipate, if that happens to us, we'll have the federal allocation. If you look on the front sheet, there's a surplus right now of $143,977.33. So, so again, just in case they reallocate, there's no additional funding for Carver, we'll be able to cover that $83,000. So we won't have a deficit. But that's, yeah.
So we're going to leave a balance in that federal money until we, until we find out?
Correct. That's why we're holding back those federal, because we also have an extended timeframe. The timeframe that you heard about tonight, we're the Plymouth County timeframe. So this comes from the federal dollars. We have until 2026 to spend the money. So we have a little bit more time with the federal allocation than we do with the Plymouth County allocation.
Great, thank you.
But it's, you know, it's a shell game, really, quite honestly.
Again, we don't want to give them any money back, so.
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
If, since the meter project's already in progress and, and we need another, would you say 111, does that take precedence over other projects just because it's already partially funded? Would they, would they take that first and then, and then look at others?
Yes, water projects aren't reimbursement. They're funded. So a water project doesn't have to go through the same process on Plymouth County's end as these other projects.
Okay, so that means that if we put in the 111, it's going to probably have a better chance of being allocated and then the others would kind of fall behind in priority. Thanks.
They've already approved the meter pit project, correct? That's already been approved by Plymouth County.
So it hasn't been submitted because it's not completed?
Oh, okay. I thought they had, that we had run that whole project by them at some point.
So most of these projects have been run by them.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you will, we've, we've run it by Plymouth County staff. We haven't gone through the process, the formal process. So we've gotten positive feedback on it. If you remember, these ARPA funding, I want to say was water projects, sewer projects, and IT projects had the higher priorities. And this is, again, one of the, one of the high priorities. Thank you.
And right now, the North Carver Water District hasn't provided any fundings for the meter pit. Is that correct?
That's correct, but they also haven't been asked because we had this funding.
Well, I'm just thinking, if there were other projects came up that materialized that were of a higher priority, I know there's retained earnings sitting in the North Carver Water District Fund, that this is a water issue that if we had to choose and try to move money around, they do have some funds, not a lot, but.
I know, Mr. Chairman, they do have some funds. I do know also that they have problems with their meters that are on people's homes or on their businesses. And those meters, there's a, there's a number, and I don't have that number memorized, that actually need to be replaced. They're, they're more than 20 years old, some of those meters. So there are needs at the North Carver Water District also that those retained earnings will be able to be allocated to.
Okay. All right, Mr. Weston.
So I'm going to invite up the department heads that have their requests so they can explain them to you. Dave.
Who's going to cover the central fire station? Is that Dave?
Evening. Evening, Mr. Sindorff. All right, I will go right under the North Carver meter connection is the Carver Middle High School. And I believe we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, Elaine, is that correct, with the school, to discuss this? So we do have a meeting. We had to change our strategy on this project a little bit. What I was hoping to do, I did the engineering. This is to install the ductless splits to improve air quality at the middle high school in the interior classrooms. That being my background, I engineered them, I designed them, I tried to procure them, thinking if I procured the equipment, we saved the markup, and we could get a contractor to install them. The roadblock I ran into is the supply houses don't want to sell 18 units to me. I have the license to buy them, but they're all so blocking their general contractors that they regularly sell to, and they're going to upset them. And it's kind of a, a fine line to walk. So I've run into that I cannot purchase them, and I don't have the time to install them, nor do I have the staff to install them. So that is, we're looking to put the whole package out to bid now, which unfortunately probably means we're not going to get all the units done, as I was hoping we could, taking the avenue that I wanted to. But, so we're going to end up paying markup on equipment and labor, so we're going to pay time and material at prevailing range rate, which I knew we're going to have to pay the labor. So hoping to save the markup, but that's not the reality. So this is where we're at. So we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the school department heads to just discuss about how to get this expedited as quickly as possible, whether that means we, if we can get a contractor in, as the Plymouth County discussed, then getting this wrapped up before December, which would mean possibly night work for contractors because this is installation in the classrooms, which they can't do during the day. So it can be done. Anything can be done, it's just a matter of time and money. So it's probably going to cut into how many units we get done, but we're still going to look at getting it done.
So just for reference, that was an update under current projects in process.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, do you want me to keep going on those?
That was the mechanical system. The requested projects for the central fire station HVAC, the well booster pump.
Okay, okay, I'll switch over to those.
Should we ask questions when we get to that?
Yeah, we have questions about that particular project.
Should we wait until you get to that item? All right, we can do that.
We probably ask now, yeah.
You want to go now, or you want to wait?
I would ask about the item that I just referred to, the splits.
Yeah. The agenda's off. So you had, so we've backed up to what we're trying to sort out here. So we have 18 you were looking to replace and?
Yes, we have 18 interior classrooms.
And, and we had had a price already that we had established for the, for the ARPA request?
We requested $180,000, the school department did, correct.
So what you're probably letting us know is that now it's got to go out to bid, so it could, could come back in.
We're not going to get all 18 done for $180,000. So we're going to see, we're going to have to, so it's going to have to go out to bid. Where I'm going to have to make an, and the way public bid works is I'm going to have to make an educated guess on how many we can get done, and then we're going to have to do addendums. So it'll be 1, 2, 3, 4, so I'll have to list out classrooms that'll bring us up to the $180,000 and stay under that. So let's say I figure we can get safely 10 done, and I have to leave money in reserve for electrical, for roofing, and things of that nature. So let's just say for a round figure, I say, all right, safely, we can probably do $100,000 in mechanical to start, and I think we have a cushion up to $130,000. So if I think 10 classrooms can get done for $100,000, I'm going to put the, the base bid is $100,000. Alt 1 is going to be for 2 classrooms, alt 2 is going to be for 2 more classrooms, and so on until we hit our cap.
So I guess in light of what we heard tonight, would it make sense to go in for a request for all of the units? And, or would we want to break that into like 2 packages, into like 10 and 8 or something like that? And that way, if, you know, if there's extra funds available, as we discussed tonight, what's our strategy, I guess, in terms of, you know, looking at replacing all of those units and could we possibly put that in? Because you're, you're saying you're going to go out to bid, but I guess I'm looking at where the time pressure is relative to, you know, what we talked about tonight and how would we put the request through for, you know, for everything, because there could be funds available to do it all.
So I guess if I can speak on that and certainly interject, if we list out 18 units and there's the base bid and let's say 6 add alternates, if we find out the add alternates come up to a sum of 200 or 250,000, we could then request the additional 70. Is that what you're leaning towards?
I think so. I mean, I don't know, you say you're going to?
We can do it separately because they consider that bid splitting.
Okay.
So it, it has to go out as 1 package, the entire project.
Okay.
Yeah.
So should we just go in for the whole package into the ARPA? Should we just, you know, look at all 18 units, get the bid, and then submit the whole amount in for a request?
I guess the only hook on that is if they don't approve it and we award the bid, then where does the additional funding come from?
Well, we couldn't award the bid until they approve the project, I would think, right? No?
No, we kind of have to do what Dave is saying, just kind of prepare what you think you can get done, leave the add-ons as optional, and then if the budget allows, add them in, is probably the best option for the town right now.
I guess, could you say we sign the bid before we know we have the funds? Am I that wrong?
That doesn't make sense.
Well, that's everything we're doing here, is you're going up to, any project that has to go out to bid, none of these projects are approved until, it's a reimbursement grant.
No, but you, you send out the request for bid, you get your bids.
Yep.
But you don't sign your bids until you know you have the money from Plymouth County.
No, actually, you have to complete the project and submit your receipts. Then it gets submitted, and then they tell you if you're approved. Yep.
Mr. Townsend?
Mr., thank you. Just to sit and talk, with the bid process that you're describing, do we have time to get all that completed and meet Plymouth County's timeline?
Yeah, we're, we're under a crunch by the postings we have to do, but it can be done. So we're actually, we have a meeting tomorrow, we're working on that, and a couple others that you'll see too. We're going to expedite as quickly as possible to meet that deadline.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just to follow on, so we would, we as a board would have to meet to approve that to go, to be submitted in? So I guess what's the timing of when we would have to, you know, if we have to get this in by, I mean, can we do this, would we have to do this at the next meeting, or can we wait till September's meeting? Or how do you, what's the timing and all this, and when would it be ready?
So the, as you heard Jared say, they want the funds secured by September 30th.
Yes.
So it's up to you if you want to approve this tonight or not. If you don't approve it tonight, we'll have to just try to find other projects. Well, actually, I'm sorry, this $180,000 is already approved.
Yeah, we already approved this.
Yes.
But any projects that are being requested tonight, if you don't approve, we will probably find, use another source, such as the federal funds. So we can, the town can still move forward with the request.
Okay.
I have one question.
Sorry, Mr. Hoffman.
Hi, Jim. So the $180,000's already been submitted, correct? That's, that's in process? That's not something new?
So it's a project that's in process? It has not been submitted because it's not completed yet? We can't submit anything to Plymouth County until it's complete, with the exception of water.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any others on that one? Okay. All right, so now do we want to switch over?
Yep. One more question, and this might not be exactly pertinent to this, but pertinent to the whole discussion, and I guess through you, to the town administrator. So with the 83 odd thousand dollars we're in the hole right now to Plymouth County, if they approve everything and we find out we're negative 83,000, how do we decide what we're going to cut? Does that, I would assume that would come back to the board at some point? You'd say we have, we're, we've spent 83,000 more, or we're just, we're just going to go to the federal and not do that at all? we're just, we're just gonna go to the federal and not do that at all? We're just gonna...
I would go to the federal.
Take to the federal.
Yeah, I'd just cover it with the federal, you know.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I wouldn't wanna be cutting the project.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, sorry.
That's good. All right, so, we'll switch over to proposed projects. So, the first item is the Carver Central Fire Station for a replacement of the condenser coil. One of their Mitsubishi City Multi units, which does most of the rooms in the first floor, had a pot failure. It was not under warranty, unfortunately. So, that is for twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. So, that pot has been ordered, because it was a long lead time, something we had to fix. It's one of those things, it's, I can't leave a building without heating and air conditioning. They do not have air conditioning right now in a lot of rooms. So, that pot has been ordered. So, that does fall under the criteria for funding, so this is my reason for submitting. It's, it's a large item that I did not plan on, obviously, and so it's not in my operating budget.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve that project.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
I did have a question on, so, there was an option A and an option B, so I guess that assumes you've scratched option B.
Yes.
Because you, if you've ordered the part, then there's no sense in doing option B.
Right, and, and that was the quicker expedition.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
And I had a just question, quick question with regards, so do we get the normal life out of the original condenser coil? I mean...
No, we did not, unfortunately, but it was not under warranty. For some reason, it was, there was leaks in the condenser coil, which is kind of like a radiator. Newer systems operated higher pressures. It was something probably, it was nothing the installation did. It was a factory. It was where it failed, was kind of in the factory part of the structure, and it's non-reparable. So, when they put the new one in, we'll make sure there's no, it happened because of chafing and rubbing. So, we'll do what we can to prevent that. There is a contractor that'll be doing that, but I'll be overseeing.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? This will be a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Okay, four zero.
Thank you. Okay, on to the next one. This is for the municipal well booster pump repair. And what this is, the municipal well sits out behind the library police station, and that well serves the library, the police station, fire headquarters, town hall, EMS out back, and also the housing development that resides out behind it. There are two booster pumps, and that's what provides pressure in the system. One of the booster pumps has had a pot failure, so that repair is eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. It was just something that we discovered, we had a problem. We would have intermittent low water drops throughout the day, and through working with the contractor, it was discovered that there was failure of some components of the second booster pump. So, right now that, we are working on one booster pump. Those pots have been ordered.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, we have a second, and the other questions, issues, or concerns. Hearing none, this will be another roll call vote. All those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Four zero.
Thank you. Okay, my next one is also for the municipal well, the emergency generator that serves that. We had, through our emergency generators, we have two services a year. That's what's called a major and a minor. It's a preventative maintenance program on all our emergency generators. During the last inspection, they discovered that the radiator was leaking. Due to the age of it, it is a Ford pot, but is no longer manufactured. The radiator is leaking. We have two options here, to replace the radiator for five thousand, one hundred and two dollars and sixty-six cents. That is a custom-built radiator out of a company out of Connecticut. The other option is to replace the entire emergency generator, which we are required to have, because it is a public water supply. That cost would be thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. If money was, if you asked me my choice, it would be to replace the entire generator, then we are done with it. But if money is tight, we can certainly do the, just the radiator for a seventh of the cost, and so be operational.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask why, what, what would be, why was your preference to replace the entire radiator?
Uh, just the, uh, replace the tire generator?
Yeah, generator.
Then, then everything is new. You have a new engine, you have a new generator. Every, everything is new, that one being twenty-something years old. So, it's, it's coming of age.
Yeah, and have we had other repairs? We've had it take...
Nothing major to that unit, as of yet, no.
But you would anticipate some?
It's, it's a mechanical device. It's, it's getting near its life cycle. So, I would, I would, if we have the money and the opportunity to cover this under these funds, I would suggest it, but we do have an option if, if funds are tight. But I would, my first suggestion would be to replace the generator.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we replace the generator.
Uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
So, the question is, again, is if we order the generator, and then, so then we have to pay for it, and then submit for the reimbursement? That's how this works?
Mm-hmm.
And, and then I guess, how does that work? I mean, does the project get approved, and then, so you expect the reimbursement should be fine, or do you have to gamble that it may not get approved?
So, this is for a municipal well?
Yes.
So, the application is different. As soon as we put in that it's for water, it's a different process. On the Plymouth County side, it's pretty much streamlines it through.
Okay.
There's, I don't wanna say there's no doubt it won't get approved, because I'm not the one approving it, but that's pretty much for municipal water, it's going to get approved.
Okay, thank you.
We're confident that it will.
Couple of questions. One is getting back to the generator itself. Right now, you said it's a twenty-year generator?
Yes, twenty-plus.
And, and a five thousand dollar replacement, can you, what kind of life you think you might get on, out of it going forward?
There's no guarantee. I mean, it would buy us a few years anyways. These generators don't typically put a lot of hours on. I mean, they exercise for an hour, thirty minutes to an hour weekly, and then obviously, they run at a power loss. So, when we retire them, they don't have a lot of hours, but it's just age and rust and, and things that usually take, take its toll.
And I'm sorry, you said it supplies, it supports the water for the town buildings? What else?
Yeah, the housing development out back.
Yep.
Behind it, yes.
Okay, and I guess if we're at negative eight, we're eighty-eight over right now, but the five is already included, right? So, this puts us probably about one-twenty-ish over, no?
Nope. All the amounts are already included.
And they're included. So, five thousand, originally, you requested the five thousand dollars, correct?
Uh, this is a new request.
But in our list here is the thirty-four. So, that's, thirty-four is factored into the, the eighty-three.
So, it's in the eighty-three, okay.
Yes, all the projects that are approved, in process, and requested tonight, total that, negative eighty-three, eight eighty.
It's in the one ninety-two, yeah.
Yeah, so it's assuming the thirty-four, nine fifty.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one thing that does a concern for me right now is having a twenty-year-old generator that probably hasn't been tested. Last time, it's had to run for three or four days. Lots of times, when you get these older equipment, and it's a time of need, and you need to run it for three or four days straight, that's when they really fail on you. And again, you know, that's, that's a problem for all of us.
All right, water is critical. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Aye aye. Jim Hoffman, Jim Hoffman says aye.
Was there approved?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do we wanna talk about the, the deck at the COA?
Okay.
That gets a...
That's in process. Do you want me to come back after the new requests, or?
I guess you could, you could address it now.
Okay. So, after having a conversation with the building inspector today, I'm actually working with our procurement office, Shelby, and we are going to put out specifications for the deck to be bid on. We have to put that out, although I have to look at, because it's thirty thirty-nine M, there is a threshold for labor versus material, so we might be able to expedite that a little bit quicker, but I can talk with Shelby about that tomorrow. We do not need engineered drawings. COA is looking to install a standalone, not attached to the building deck, kind of overlooking where the, I think I've kind of cookie cutter, possibly get it in between the septic tank and the septic field, and it would suit their needs. So, I'm looking to expedite that, get those specifications written, and get that out to bid as quickly as possible. So, that's where that stands.
Great.
And the estimate's ninety thousand dollars?
Yes, that was, that was an estimate that the director had, COA director had gotten.
Okay.
So, where exactly over there is, is the idea for where the deck's gonna go now?
Behind the building, when the parking law ends, and it goes to the roadway where deliveries come, right there. So, the end of the deck would not be where the parking is, because we don't wanna put the deck where people park, to avoid any accidents. And we can get about forty feet before the septic tank. I just cannot cover the, the tank and the field, but I think we have enough room in there, and it can stretch out about twenty feet, and it'll be ADA compliant, ground level on the, on the roadside, on the driveway side, and then obviously, it'll be extended out and built that way.
I, I know it's been a challenge to work that in down there. Appreciate all your hard work at making that happen.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, the next item is a, it's actually a Middleborough Water Bill for North Carver Water. So, it's the December through March bill. I believe they've already paid it, but again, as Glenn was saying, they do have a lot of projects ahead of them. This was just another effort to try to help the finances, and we know water will be approved.
Okay, but I thought the North Carver Water District was paying for this? No?
I believe this one is one that we paid out of town funds, just to expedite it, because at, at the time of the, the bill coming forward, we did not have three commissioners, and they were not able to even hold a meeting or vote on the bill. So, we, we did expedite it as town forces. And this is again, to make sure we had our partnership with town in Middleborough. We didn't wanna delay the payment any longer than it was. It was already passed to the thirty days.
No more.
So, is this a reimbursement of the town? Is that what this is, or?
This is essentially a reimbursement for the town.
Okay.
Well, yes, but right, right now, I, I agree. The main thing was, you know, way back when with Town and Middleborough, we had a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of water we could pay for that took them, it took a while to get paid, and we gotta pay. So, now there's twenty-nine thousand, yes, pay them, but the North Carver Water District should be funding us back the twenty-nine thousand dollars. Is that, is that the plan?
Yeah, I could address that with the North Carver Water District, now that we have three commissioners and, and a board, you know.
Yeah, because this is, this is money used to, I mean, this is paid for water for all the residents.
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman, I guess my, my question would be, what is the plan for the next water bill? Obviously, we're not gonna be able to pay that with ARPA funds.
Correct. So, the, the next water bill, there would be the three commissioners would come forward for, for payment, for a normal payment, like they would for the...
So, the only reason you're looking for us to pay this through ARPA is the fact that there was a, that, because of what happened with the commission, they didn't have a full commission, and they couldn't vote to pay those bills. That's...
Correct.
Okay. And, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I guess I don't understand exactly, so will this money go back to the general fund? Is, is that where this money goes? I mean, how, usually we're, with, with ARPA, we're paying a project. In this case, you're asking us to pay back the town. So, is it going back to the general fund? Is, where's it gonna go?
I will check with them, Mr. Townsend. I don't wanna misspeak right now.
Okay. And, well, I guess, just to continue that, does that take the approval of town meeting to, to allocate that money? If, if we do that, I mean, we don't normally, I don't think we've ever taken ARPA money and just put it back in the general fund. So, I'm, I'm trying to see how we would...
Again, I don't, you know, without having the finance director here, Mr. Townsend, I don't wanna...
So, maybe we table this?
Yeah, I wonder if we should table this, maybe, until we have a little more...
Till we get more information on how it would...
Yeah, we just need to know all the mechanics. And again, we did a hundred and fifty-four thousand. How did that went through the system, with regards to the financial system? How did that track?
Yeah, again, I just, I'm, I'm not against it. I'm just wondering what the mechanics are of, of getting it to happen.
That's all, just table it, yeah.
Mike, do you want to speak on the hearing?
What about me? Listen, I got handles. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim, I'll make sure you get a copy of this when you return. The ARPA proposal in front of you tonight is for a, it's actually a new, new type of equipment that we haven't seen before in EMS. It's called Athena GTX. And what it is, it's a vital signs monitoring system that can be done remotely. So, for patients in isolation, such as pandemics, things of that nature, we can put the blood pressure cuff on them. We put a pulse ox probe on their finger, and it monitors all their vital signs and reports it back directly to a computer. So, we don't have to sit next to the patient and look at the vital signs. We don't have to actually touch the patient to check their blood pressure and things like that, as we currently do. It works, and it works in instances when you especially have several patients. So, it comes as a kit of four, and the plan would be to use this the same way we did with, back in COVID, when we had the COVID response vehicle. If we have a pandemic, we still have that response vehicle that we can refit to make sure it has every equipment we need. First, PPE cleaning supplies, and this equipment would go in it in a case, and would get dispatched on calls with the ambulance, and it just makes it a lot easier to monitor vital signs of these patients without having to sit within six feet of the patient. You can still wear your PPE, still treat the patient as needed, but if you're monitoring vital signs, you don't have to be right next to the patient, or right now, you know, we have to really be touching their arm and within a couple of feet of their face normally to do this. So, this equipment is, when I say fairly new, it's, it's been, it's fairly new for being used for this type of stuff. It's been around a lot for like mass casualty, things of that nature, but it's new for, since the pandemic, they started putting these packs out to be used in this manner.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this project.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
No, sounds like something that would be a great use?
It's sixteen thousand, is that...
Yeah, it includes shipping and handling. It's four, it's four devices. It, it, it comes with the software to connect it to the, to download on the tablets. We currently have four, we'll have, well, in the process of putting four tablets in the service on the, in all four vehicles of the department. So, we'd be able to use it on any one of the vehicles, and it also comes with a carry case and all the accessory cables and stuff that you need.
So, so I guess my question is, how would this, this, would this just sit on a shelf until it was a pandemic, or how do you use it during normal day-to-day runs and operations?
So, yeah, so it would definitely be good use for a pandemic, but between now and then, when it's not being used for that, it's, it's a good use for fireground rehab.
Of what?
So, for fireground rehab for firefighters. So, after, when firefighters come out of the building, they go through what's called rehabilitation, which is they come by through an area where normally EMS is, and they sit down, we monitor their vitals, we make sure that they get plenty of water, and this would work out, we could do four simultaneous vital signs, and without having to have one person, you know, because sometimes we only have two people on the ambulance who are at that scene, and if you get four, five, six firefighters to come into rehab, it takes a little while sometimes to get to each one of them. So, this would actually expedite doing their assessments and making sure that they're healthy and clear to return to work after they've done their rehab for twenty minutes or so.
Got it. Mr. Hoffman, any questions? Can you hear us? We can't hear you.
You might be on mute.
Can't hear you.
Are you on mute?
Yeah, you know.
There you go. Any questions, all set?
No, all set, sounds like a good project.
So, my only, my other question is, could you use this in general? I mean, if you're treating somebody, and say you're transporting, or you're moving them from one place to another, could you just, it's...
We, we could, but...
I assume it's like wireless, or it's Bluetooth?
Exactly.
So, instead of somebody sitting there the whole time, you could actually be recording the data if you're, you know...
We could, only, we kinda, we, we like to let the staff use hands-on equipment, just so they stay familiar with it. So, it's always good to know how to take a manual blood pressure when you can, but it is something that we could use, even, even in cases where you have patients who may be symptomatic of some sort of a communicable disease or whatever that you may wanna give them some space on. You can definitely use them on them as well, not just someone in a pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? No. Hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote. Say aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Happy to help you spend money.
As always.
So the project that we've put forth to use some of this money for is to purchase some additional sign message boards. As you know, we have a unique need for those every fall. We usually borrow them from other communities. And since we're trying to spend down this money, I think it makes sense to purchase some of these. The signboards that we've put forth fit under the category support public health response, new public communication efforts. Our signboard during the last pandemic was used at testing, parking lot testing sites to advise people as to where to go to be tested. So that's how it fits into the COVID or to the pandemic. And those signboards, as you've seen, we can use them to advertise information to the public for town meeting, for upcoming votes, for road closures, for assistance with the traffic, for the King Richard's Fair, and numerous other methods. The signboards we're looking at match or come from the same company that we purchased the two radar signs, the speed signs that we have out. Those signs and the signboards connect back to the station via the internet and can be programmed over the air to change the messages or to adjust the speed that's on the signs. These four trailers, in addition to being signboards, are radar trailers as well, so that we'll also be able to use those to deploy around town where we have speeding complaints and not require an officer to be there, but to collect data and to slow traffic down. So we've gotten three quotes on them from three different companies. The lowest quote comes from the company All Traffic Solutions. The quote is $19,158.10 per sign for a total of $76,632.40. I know the request you have in front of you is a little higher than that. That was what, the original quote I got was a little higher. So...
All right, then we have a motion.
So the, sorry, the request is for $76,632.40?
Yes, for four signboards, yes.
For four, okay.
Yeah.
Motion to approve this project.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
I guess the only question I have is, chief, any idea when we would take delivery of these signs?
Hopefully soon. This company says there's a two-week lead time. So if you approve this, I can order them tomorrow and hopefully we can have them before the start of the fair. But obviously, I can't guarantee that. If we don't, we do have the same commitments to borrow signboards from the other communities for the start of the fair when we need them.
But it's not a long wait time. It's relatively...
Yeah, they told us a two-week lead time, but I've been told that before by license and things take a lot longer. Sometimes it takes longer, so...
So I do have a question relative to that through the chair. So if we did approve it and we're going to go for reimbursement again, so we purchased these now and we have them, so where's the funds coming from to actually purchase? And then you've got to go in for reimbursement. Where do we, where do we get the funds for $76,000?
So reimbursement grants are typical. All grants are different, but basically what happens is finance would set up a grant account and you run it negative and you spend the money for the grant and then you get reimbursed by the state. That's typically how we do grants.
Okay.
So this is not something unusual for the town?
And if we were not to get reimbursed, then we'd have to...
Use the federal funds. So when we, we'll do the review after this and go through everything. But we do have that money that is unspent for federal funds, $143,977. So that's why we want to run all of our projects through Plymouth County because they are giving us the deadline. We want to spend all the money. We have more time to spend the federal projects. So if all this got approved and you did go over that amount, we would still have money left over in federal funds.
All right. My follow-on question is, is this eligible through both ARPA and the federal funds and the mechanism?
We did meet with Plymouth County last week to go over all these proposed projects. And although they can't guarantee it, so they use an auditing firm for all the projects. They don't look at the projects and approve them. The auditing firm does. So each department head has to fill out an application. We have to do the procurement. So we have to look at it as auditors ourselves. Are we getting all the information we need to Plymouth County in order for them to approve it? And it could just be a matter of the wording in the application. So there are a bunch of things on our end that may not suffice. You know, they might not like the wording that we're using for the category that we're putting it under. But they're helpful. They'll come back and say, well, why don't you try this other category?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a quick question. These signs have dual purpose. They all can do speed signs, you know, your speed's too fast, as well as the text messaging.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other questions? Hearing none.
I just have a quick question.
Hoffman?
Through to the chief. How many signs did we use last year? Did we use four in total?
Yes. We used four. Actually, no, that's not true. We used, we used four and then we borrowed two from the state, if you recall, right after that meeting. But we, four would suffice. Would get us to what we need.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Please, sir.
So whose credit card should I use? Thank you. Thanks for this. Thank you, chief.
Okay, that's it for the request, right? Next item on the agenda is the American Rescue Plan ARPA update, although I'm, feel free, we've kind of gone over a lot, but feel free to pass through.
So just to review, Plymouth County did allocate $2,114,389.49 to us. Everything you see here is real time. I know we've had struggles with the update in the past, so I was just trying to give you the most up-to-date figures as possible. You did not approve the Middleborough water amount, so I will go ahead and take that out when we go to the next screen so you can see the amount we are over. But as of right now, you have the total amount approved, which is that $763,000. The amount pending, which are projects in process, I'm sorry, pending, which has been submitted to Plymouth County, I apologize. That $558,658.75 has been submitted to Plymouth County and that's the amount we're waiting for them to approve. So that means the project is completed. All the invoices are in and the application has gone to the auditors. In process are all the outstanding projects and the total in requests is what you have considered tonight. Another thing that came up when we spoke to Plymouth County last week was that we are being reimbursed for the North Carver Water District membranes. And that was an article at town meeting last year. So, and that was approved. And Plymouth County did approve that it does go back into our funds. So they did confirm that.
And is that reflected in the $83,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So all these numbers subtracted out. That $102,583 is added back in.
Do all those numbers add up to the $2,114,308.49?
It adds up to negative $83,880.80.
Well, the 2114 is the total. Those five categories equal $2,198.189 to create the net 83. So 83 were over, except for the 30 for the...
Except for the 30 now, though.
And we'll go through all those items in detail. The federal allocation was $1,231,634. We have spent $1,087,656.67, leaving a balance of $143,977.33. So that does give us wiggle room in these projects through Plymouth County. So to go through in detail on the next page, these are the Plymouth County funds. So that $763,481.98, including, that includes the check that was received tonight. So that is all of our projects that are completed and reimbursed as of today. As I said earlier, in the 2023 annual town meeting, Article Number Eight, approved the reimbursement of $102,583. And Plymouth County did inform us that that can go back into our funds. Projects that were previously approved, that are still outstanding, are, I'm sorry, that are approved and gone to Plymouth County that we've completed, received the receipts, and put into the system. And the auditors for Plymouth County are looking it over for approval for reimbursement are the Town Hall Conference Room, the Townwide Fiber Loop, the Town Hall E911 Compliance, the EMS Tablet and Accessories, the EOC Training Room, and the Smart Board and Cart. That total is $558,658.75. The projects that are currently in process, meaning they are not completed, invoices have not been submitted, and we're just trying to get these completed in order to submit those for consideration for reimbursement. That is the meter pit, the middle high school mechanical system, which Dave gave the update on, the council on aging kitchen equipment. There is one more piece of equipment on order and then that will be submitted. The municipal well corrosion, the bid is advertised and the bid opening is September 10th on that. So there's a purchase of an electric vehicle for the health agent. We are awaiting the registration and invoice. And once that's completed, we can submit the invoice to Plymouth County on that. We also have the purchase of an electric vehicle for inspections and assessing. And the dealership is still awaiting delivery of that. Another project is the decommissioning of the 22 private wells. That is in process and we're anticipating that to be completed hopefully by the end of August. And the COA deck, which Dave just gave the update on that. So that total is $786,107.92. The request that came in tonight, I'm going to go ahead and take out this total. So you didn't vote on the North Carver connection meter for the meter pit for Middleborough. Is that something you want to consider?
The additional funding put in?
I would say yes.
Yeah, I would think we would want to vote on that. Yeah, I would make a recommendation. I would make a motion to approve that project.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. All those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Mr. Hoffman says aye.
Thank you.
So all the projects that were presented to you tonight, with the exception of the North Carver Water District water bill, are here. And so I took that amount out and that leaves you over $54,725.62.
And does Plymouth County give us a target, try to be 10% over, try to be 5% over?
So, yep, they want you to be 10% over. We're currently 2.5%.
Great. Mr. Ryan?
Do we have more in the pipeline? Are we working on a few other items?
Actually, another request, potential request came in today. So, yeah, we are going to continue to look for requests.
Okay. Thank you.
I could tell you, Mr. Chairman, I'd be comfortable going up to the 142,000. 177. Again, just in case these things aren't approved by ARPA, I want to make sure we can cover them. But I'd like to go up to that amount. I know it doesn't reach that 10% they're asking us for. But I get nervous just in case, you know, they don't approve or they don't have additional funding coming back. That's all. I don't want us to be stuck with the bill.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Townsend?
Just quickly through you to the town administrator or the assistant town administrator, any of these projects in process, do we anticipate an issue with the timeliness of all these, any of these projects? Do we think they're all, they all meet the Plymouth County calendar guidelines?
So as Dave said earlier, I think the only one that we were worried about was the school, the, that, the, I don't know what you, the atrophy C, I guess for better words. So we are meeting on that tomorrow to see if that is something that can be done, like we talked about, working nights or off hours to get it done. Yeah, so that was, that project was our only concern as far as the timeline.
Okay. And then after your meeting, if it's determined that that can't be done, then you would come back and we'd look for some other projects to pretty quickly approve? Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I very much like this format. We can start tying some of these things together.
Okay. And then if you just want to look at federal real quick, this is a repeat because I don't think we've added anything else in here, except that maybe projects have been completed that weren't completed before. We just kind of separated those out. So for federal funds, we have the North Carver Water District membranes, the middle high school culinary, the public safety ballistic protection, two speed alert message signs, the EOC furniture, the election drop box, and the 19 fire department computers.
Well, I guess now I have a question. How come the 102, I guess it was spent with federal but went back to Plymouth ARPA?
So I believe the total was 204.
Oh, I thought it was $200,000.
Yeah, so it was split.
All right. Thank you so much. Other questions? Next item on the agenda. Let's see, a discussion regarding King Richard's Fair traffic and safety planning with public safety officials. I guess would Chief Dufulie want to come up and give us, and any other safety official wants to come up?
Good evening again. I want to thank all the chiefs for being here, Tom Walsh and me, emergency management being here as well. And I know Ame and Ryan are here from the fair as well. So I think I was asked to just give you an update as to where we're at. Is that correct? Yep, yes. Okay. So I think everybody's well aware that over the past three years, we've worked very hard to work with the fair to deal with some of the traffic issues that have come up based on the number of cars coming into town. We've had working groups. We've had a traffic plan prepared by a professional traffic engineer. We've worked together with the fair to come up with an emergency response plan, all hazard plan for the fair. We've done a lot of work over the past three years to get where we are today. Last October, we had a day that went bad with traffic. And after that, we convened a emergency meeting. And from that meeting, some conditions were put in place by the select board, by yourselves to, for us to move forward for the remainder of that year. Working with the fair as we always have, we put those conditions into effect and they worked very, very well. We secured a secondary parking lot at Ediville. We secured some extra signboards and some additional signs. We added two police officers to help with the traffic. And by being there in real time and watching the level of traffic coming into the parking lots, combined with the level of traffic that we had in queue out on Route 58 and making real-time decisions, we're able to switch over using Meadow Street and Rochester Road to get traffic into Ediville Railroad. With the school buses on site, they were able to transport the individuals from the parking lots to the fair successfully. We didn't have to go and use Savvy Zap at all, which is a big plus for residents in the area. So all in all, the conditions that were put in place last year worked very, very well to help us finish out the year successfully. This is from my opinion, from public safety opinion. Certainly we'll have, we'll let Ame come up and speak if she'd like to on this. But I believe she'll say the same thing. We worked very well together. And I think that we've already had discussions this year prior to this meeting tonight. We're all on the same page moving forward. In those conditions, you gave some authority to me to make decisions in real time about what we use. And it's my suggestion that we would adjust some of the conditions for the first three weeks of the fair because the 20 years that I've worked it, we've never ever gone over the parking lots in the first three weeks. It just doesn't happen. I checked my notes again from last year because I make notes every day. And again, those first three weekends, we never exceed the parking lot. So I don't think we need to have the buses on standby. I don't think we need the extra two officers during that time period, which will help to save a little bit of money for the fair. But I do think we need the rest of the plan in place. Starting on the fourth weekend, I think that's when we've always historically seen the numbers creep up. And that's when those conditions should go back into place. And I think we will have a very successful year if we continue to do that. We've got, we've made good notes. We've got a good plan in place. And I believe that it will come to fruition without any problems. Again, it's traffic. There's always going to be some glitches, but there's no, there's no perfect way to resolve this. But making decisions in real time, using the conditions that you put in place last year were very successful. Some of the, some of the days that we had heavy traffic that we needed to switch over to Ediville, we had Route 58 completely open back up by 1:30 in the afternoon, which is, if you guys are there, you know that that's a great achievement. Usually it's 3:00, 3:30 before 58. Usually it's three, three-thirty before Fifty-eight's open again. So the, the changes we made have been very successful and helped us to alleviate the traffic problems, which causes a public safety issue, as we mentioned last year, when we plug up Fifty-eight with cars. There's still going to be a lot of cars, we're still going to have the cones out there, but it, the conditions that are in place definitely allow us to move those cars along and get them to the secondary parking lot with, with very little issues.
Great, any questions from the board, Mr. Ryan?
Do we need to take any action on the waiving the conditions for the first three weeks, or is that just?
I don't, I don't believe you do, because you've indicated in there that myself and the Town Administrator in conjunction can, can do that, so it's certainly up to you if you want to, but I think that there's, it's already covered in that.
All right.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, so just so I'm clear, so tonight, when we, assuming we, we approve these licenses, are you looking for us to approve these licenses with all the conditions that we had approved at that emergency meeting last, subject to all the conditions we approved at that emergency meeting last year on September fifth of last year?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
I just want to suggest maybe if we want to see if anybody from the fair would like to speak to you before you make any votes, I'd.
Sure.
Up to you, not, not trying to control your meeting, but they did come, so.
No, that's fine, just wanted to check, Mr. Hoffman, you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
So I wonder, I wonder, Mr. Chairman, if, if perhaps I should read the conditions that we attached to these licenses last year, just so we could.
Sure.
See if there's any changes we want to make, chief? Is that something?
Sure.
So, so these are the, the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
I'm sorry.
Just so the, the board is aware, there is an updated order of the Select Board. The, the conditions have not changed.
Okay.
There was some minor wording, and I shouldn't say minor, but it relates back to, if you look at the third line of the first paragraph, voted to amend all licenses and permitted, permits issued by the Select Board for all two thousand twenty-four King Richard's Fair events. That was under recommendation of Town Council.
Okay.
It's the only change to the language in here, you'll see, it's my signature instead of the previous Town Administrator on the second page, but again, so it's an order to the Select Board dated August sixth, two thousand twenty-four. The applicant has seen the revised order, but none of the conditions have changed.
Okay, and, and have the, have the public safety chiefs had a chance to review these?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I'm, I'm fine, and I don't think we need to, to read it. Thank, thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate that.
Okay, so I guess, just a few, any other questions from the board? Okay, only a question I have is, is Columbus Day weekend, I know Ediville's opening.
Yes.
Have you guys discussed a plan that will reduce the size of the lot capacity during a busy weekend?
Yes, and I think for those two days, we're going to have to make things work. We've been told by Ediville, and I'll let the fair speak to that more, but that there will be some amount of parking that is there, and I think based on the, based on the difficulty of changing that plan for those two days and just going somewhere else, I think we will get through it by using the parking lot, parking space that's available at Ediville. They're talking about, well, you know better than me, I guess, the road that comes in, Edav, having some parking over there as well, and then finally, I think, if need be, we can let the overflow get into Savory and keep everything here. I don't want to speak for the fair, but I talked briefly, they talked about trying to maybe use a parking lot up at, or the grass up at the airport. In my opinion, that's a great idea, but to turn this all around, to use their parking lots, then Ediville, and then go there, I, I'm just not sure how we're going to logistically do that. They do have some signage that we had put in place, and we're going to use the, the high school that could be used, but we'd need detail offices from Plymouth, because it's not in Towne-Carver, and I think, I'm very confident that we can, we can make it work with what we have, because Ediville's, at least told me that their, their numbers for that day are about two thousand, and it shouldn't, and there should be considerable space left in the parking lot. At least that was when we had the last meeting with them, so.
Great, thank you.
So I think we'll have, it'll be an interesting two days, but I think we will get through it.
Okay. Would the representatives?
I just had a quick question.
Sorry, Mr. Hoffman?
So, so chief, did you say that on Columbus Day, they're going to try to utilize the high school as well?
No, no, we were, what I was mentioning is that they, we talked about maybe using a parking lot up at the, at the airport, and that they had some sign, that the fair had purchased some signs previous to us, not this year, but the year before, that would have directed traffic to the high school if we needed, but we could use those signs to help if we were going to move to the airport. I just, I still think even with that in place, we're better off to use Savory and keep everything in an area that I, I can control better with the police officers that I have on scene.
But if you did use the Plymouth Airport, how would people get back, go off, a bus?
They'd have to get bussed up there and bussed back. So I, again, I just think the logistics of trying to operate three, their main lots, the Ediville lot, and the airport. We could do anything, but I, I think that we're probably better off to stick with what we can control locally, which is whatever's left over at Ediville, and then Savory, because we can get a considerable number of cars in Savory as well. Not the best plan, we'll still have some people walking from Savory in, but, and if we can avoid that, I like to avoid using Savory, but it is, it is a viable option for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would representatives from King Richard's Fair like to come up?
Good evening.
Just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page.
I have no idea what he's talking about. No. Thank you, and thank you chiefs for being here as well, I appreciate it. No, Chief Defilly and I spoke, and we're all on the same page. We'd already talked to the buses, we already have that all booked, we've talked with Ediville during the year. Yes, they told us that they were going to be doing something for Columbus Day, which was obviously a bit of a concern, but we talked through it, and we never even utilized the full lot at Ediville before on our busy days, so I think that we will just be fine. Again, we're still, you know, limiting attendance with online ticket purchases, date specific, so I think that everything will work out well, and again, like Chief Defilly said, you know, sometimes you do have to make live decisions, because we're a live event, and you, you just go with it, but we're, we work very well together, and I feel that this will be, hopefully it won't rain every weekend like it did last year, and we'll hopefully have a good, a good season.
Any questions from the board?
No, no, I just, I just want to say, I appreciate you folks coming back, and I, I appreciate all the hard work of, of our public safety chiefs and everyone working together to find common ground, I think that's.
Thank you, it's been, it's been a, it's been a little difficult of three years of committees, but it, it's worked out well, and we're, we're very happy, and we all seem to work very well together, so that's wonderful. I think there was some confusion that people, we've been getting emails and some phone calls that there wasn't going to be a Carver Day, but there is a Carver Day again, and it's always the first day of the show, so it's August thirty-first.
Thank you, on, on behalf of everyone in Carver, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, through you, could I just ask, how are we doing as far as online ticket sales, as far as in-person ticket sales? I know that was a big issue last year.
Yeah.
Is pretty much everything online now, or?
Really, really, honestly, ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of the tickets are all online, because people want to make sure that they have a ticket for that date. And so we always used a little bit of fudge room for, you know, someone that needed to come in, they don't have credit cards, or they need to buy a ticket at the gate, but we're very on top of it, and we're, we've really worked through this very thoughtfully and thoroughly.
Thank you.
Just one question, as far as, how many buses did you use last year?
Well, we always put a request in for at least three buses, sometimes the Carver schools couldn't accommodate that. I think it was just one day that they only had two buses, otherwise it seemed to work very well, and they all had my private cell phone number, and so I communicated with the buses, and this year, Ryan and I will both have the, both of our phone numbers, and it seemed to work very well.
Great, I just want to echo Mr. Townsend's comments as well, we hope we'll work together. I know it was a tough few years, but it seems like we have a plan that makes sense.
Yes, I agree. Just one more note with the new signs that have been approved, I think I need a slowdown in the Towne-Carver so I don't get a speeding ticket.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would any of the chiefs want to, have anything to say, any, just want to offer an opportunity? Nope. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion, are you looking for a motion on the licenses?
To approve the licenses?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve the one-day special licenses for Renaissance Food Limited, King Richard's Fair Main Street for eight thirty-one, nine one, nine two, nine seven, nine eight, nine fourteen, nine fifteen, nine twenty-one, nine twenty-two, nine twenty-eight, nine twenty-nine, ten five, ten six, ten twelve, ten thirteen, ten fourteen, ten nineteen, ten twenty, subject to the order of the Select Board dated August sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Do you need me to read all those conditions, or is that?
No, no, that's fine. We have a motion, do we need a, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other questions, issues, or concerns? Hearing none, roll call vote, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, next, would anyone like to make a motion for the entertainment license?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the entertainment license for King Richard's Fair, Inc., or King's Fair, Inc., Main Street.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
I just have one question, should that also be subject to the order of the Select Board dated August sixth, two thousand twenty-four?
To amend that to be subject to the order of the Select Board.
We have an amended, we have a motion, we have an amended motion, we have a second, a second. Any other issues, questions, issues, concerns, hearing none, roll call vote, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Anyone like to make a motion for the Sunday license?
Jim?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the Sunday license, King Richard's Fair, Inc., Main Street, subject to the order of the Select Board dated August sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Your motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion, a second.
Delay.
Any other questions, issues, or concerns, hearing none, roll call vote, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Congratulations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, a vote to correct the six eighteen twenty-four vote to rescind the vote of June twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, to accept the Sapanic property located on Tremont Street, assesses map ten dash three dash zero dash, uh, to July twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. I guess I would defer to the Town Administrator, or this is the Town Administrator, to walk us through this.
Sure, so, Mr. Chairman, there was a misprint on the last agenda with the, with the date of the Sapanic property. It was listed as June twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, the actual date was July twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. So we're asking for that date to be corrected.
So the motion is to rescind the vote that was taken on June eighteenth?
Are these two motions?
I think so.
It would just be one motion to amend the date of the vote. So I would, he'd just keep the motion to amend the date so the vote that was stated stays the same.
A motion to amend the date from June twenty-first, two thousand fifteen to July twenty-first, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns, hearing none, roll call vote, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Four zero to approve. Uh, next item is an approval of the two thousand twenty-four state primary election warrant for September third, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, roll call vote, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And we're down to approval of the minutes for July twenty-third. Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
For July twenty-third.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions, issues, or concerns?
I did have a comment, so there were a couple of items we identified that we had asked the Town Administrator to report on each of the meetings, I think, such as the North Carver Water District. So we had listed several items, and I did not see those in the minutes. Don't, don't know how we should handle that, if we want to identify them and have them added, or, or have them listed, but if you recall at the last meeting, we said we want a continual update of several items, I forget what they are, because.
I, I don't have them memorized on.
All right, I would make a recommendation if those could be added to the minutes, so just we keep track of what we, for the request.
Yeah.
If you recall, remember there were several items.
I, I do recall that, perhaps, perhaps we're better off tabling these minutes and approving them at the next meeting with the changes.
Yes, please.
But I think we have a motion.
We have a mo, yeah, we have a motion, withdraw your motion.
That's my motion.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to table, or do we need to?
I don't think we need to.
Okay. All right, then we'll review these minutes at the next meeting. Uh, let's see, Select Board announcements, Mr. Ryan?
So a couple things, Carver Night Out is this Thursday, just to remind people. The other thing is that announced today was that there's a triple E threat now, Carver's been raised to high risk. So just to remind people that, to please be aware of that when you're outdoors, that we've, we've been elevated to high risk. And then, again, the farmer's market's still happening on Saturdays, people, it's a good event to attend.
Mr. Townsend?
That is exactly my Select Board announcement, so I will just thank Mr. Ryan and say ditto, that's right.
Uh, Mr. Hoffman?
I think that both gentlemen come to mind as well. I, I was very, I was very impressed with the work between the police department and the health that to have Carver Night Out, which is a big event every year, so I was glad to see that we could work that out. And they will be giving a repellent at the event as well, which is a great precaution, so.
Great.
Everybody can feel safe being there.
I would just like to echo the same comments and just add that congratulations to everyone for us a very successful home day. Everybody has seemed to enjoy themselves as they do every year. I, quick question though, on the, as Mr. Ryan brought up on the triple E, are there limits to outdoors activity? I think one year it was like seven o'clock, are there any?
I do know for the Carver Night Out, they're going to limit the, the hours, and they are trying to not schedule things after dusk, is what it comes down to, so there are some effects, I believe, and I haven't, I don't have an update from the Little League, but I think they're asking them to cut back on their hours, and they're reaching out to the Recreation Department to, again, to limit hours.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, through you to the Town Administrator, could, could we reach out to Plymouth County Mosquito Control and see if there's some way we could get them to do a town-wide, town-wide spray now that we've reached this level of triple E?
I will make the call tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you, could you just send an email out to the board, letting us know what they?
Update, update?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next meeting, September third. So unless something comes up, and typically we have the, a meeting towards the end of August, but right now, we have a next meeting scheduled for the third, and we'll see what, see what kind of items come up. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
A motion, a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Okay, thank you, Eric F. Eight.
Have a good night, everybody.